Can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda? All right, it's Maura and Beth. And then, we are going to move to some very fun items, some student recognition. I'll pass it on to Dr. Harrison.
Yes, great. Well, good evening, everyone. You know, as I always say, it's one of the highlights when we get a stop and acknowledge the accomplishments and good work of our students. And tonight, we have scheduled the opportunity to recognize two real special students in our school district. Unfortunately, only one is here at this point in time. Mr. Cohen is reaching out now to the other family to see if they're en route. But we have some great recognition coming from Main Street School where we're going to recognize the work of Alex Shapiro, who is our Math 24 winner. So I'll ask Ms. Chatnick to come to the mic.
...to watch, and you should be thrilled with your accomplishment. Come on up.
So you've got to show off that T-shirt, too, I think.
Well done.
Great job. Congratulations.
I'm impressed with your determination. And I get to actually give you --
Hold on.
And you get to keep that, put it on your wall, or whatever you'd like.
He's already got the T-shirt on.
Good job, Alex.
So, the other student isn't here at this point, and I know Mr. Cohen is making some phone calls.
We'll see, okay.
So maybe we want to move on at this point.
Okay. So congratulations to Alex. And right now, I guess, should we go do community comment and then go back into executive at that point?
Yeah, I think we -- yeah, that's what Michael was just indicating. Yes, and so I just want to acknowledge that the student that we're waiting on is another one of our outstanding Irvington students, Zachary Rosman, who is one of our high school students. And this summer, Zachary had the tremendous honor of participating in the International History Olympiad World Championship and the International Geography B World Championships in Berlin, Germany. As students of the board and those veterans that have been here, you'll remember that Zachary has been in this room on numerous occasions for having won our local GOBs. So this is really an amazing, you know, next step in his passion for history and geography. So we're hopeful that he will arrive shortly. When we come out of executive session, maybe he will be here. If not, we will make sure we schedule him for an upcoming meeting. I know we want the opportunity for community comment before we go into an executive session. But I want just to, in looking into the audience and seeing Susan Bernadette sitting here, I want to give a heartfelt thank you, not only from the administration and the Board of Education, but from every student and staff member in the district for the recent grant that the PTSA just funded. The grant was just shy of $30,000. That will allow us to complete the first phase of a new video surveillance system. Certainly, this would not have been possible without the support of the PTSA. The district is deeply involved, and we're paying for the related wire installation, which has already occurred, the upgrade of some servers that would support this work, which was built into our budget already. But realistically, the PTSA is buying the physical cameras and the recording devices that link back to our servers. So heartfelt, thank you, thank you for your support of not only the school district, as you always do, but of this very, very important initiative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
So, at this time, we'll have an opportunity for community comment on topics that appear on the agenda.
Thank you, Joyce.
Yes, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Alex. Congratulations.
Good job, Alex.
Good job. Bye-bye. So if there's anyone in the community who'd like to make a comment or ask a question, you're welcome to come to the microphone. We ask that you share your name and that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes or less. If anybody would like to speak, one wants. Okay, so we had some conversation in executive session that needs to continue because it's detailed. So we are going to go back into executive session at this time, which is not typical. But to do so, we will have to ask those who are not part of the discussion just to wait patiently outside until we come back into our public meeting. So could I get a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing --
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation. I get a second? So is Beth and Maura all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Yeah, they flip-flop this time. So, yeah, so if you don't mind, I'm not sure exactly how much time it'll take, but we hope --
I would hope we'll be done in approximately 20 minutes.
Perhaps around 8:00, we'll come back. Thank you very much. Yeah. We always have many items to review, and so that was part of that process. And now, we have a presentation on our 2018-19 district goals, and I will turn it over to you, Dr. Harrison.
Great, well, thank you. Bless you. I can say that on behalf of my administrative colleagues, that we're real excited about the work that we've mapped out this year, not only because it's work that we see as necessary work that we believe in and something that we're deeply engaged in, but it is another example of the growth the district takes. And the growth that we're taking is really on multiple fronts. One, looking at the growth of our goal process and continuing to seek to improve it and to be more detailed in our work each and every year. But the fact that it looks at how centered we're becoming in and around our strategic plan and specifically the strategic objectives. That being said, when we look to our goals for this year, we've identified a new structure and hierarchy for how we're managing our goal-related system this year. So to begin, we have a goal hierarchy that exists in the school district. So we have our strategic plan, our vision for tomorrow, that is kind of the umbrella that sits above all that we do. And you'll see examples of how that's all integrated throughout this work. But then, we have the district goals and objectives, which we're here to talk about tonight. And then, of course, the building goals and department goals, which support all of that work. So really, look at that as a hierarchy of those three different tiers. We could look to add another tier. You could also think of like personal goals that individuals have and how that all aligns back to this work at the end of the day. So our goal structure and process, everything, as I said, is aligned with the strategic plan. We have overarching district goals that are then supported at the local level, and they will be presented and shared to the board, I should say, shared with the board in a report format after this evening. And then, we'll look for opportunities for that type of follow-up throughout the course of the year, and I'll speak to that a little bit later on. So when we think about our strategic plan and we think about everything that is so important in that, we have these six strategic objectives that stand out. And these objectives, over the last two years, are becoming woven into what we do. And I can tell you from my seat, it's pretty exciting to hear staff starting to talk about them, our principals talking about it, and how they're backing into them, how they're leading with them. So in doing so, and I don't want to read each of these items to you, but we have six objectives that guide our work. And the first is speaking to student learning experiences and having rich, rigorous, diversified curriculum that is rich with technology. We're encouraging innovation, creativity, and risk-taking. We certainly value social and emotional growth and want our students to become active participants in our broader society, not just within our schools. Of course, we want to support our educators through ongoing professional learning and opportunities for collaboration. We want to increase our partnerships by strengthening our connections, and we want our community to really be proud of our schools. We want them to identify with our schools. We want them to see our school logo and know what that's about. And we want them to be able to begin to articulate what it is that we stand for and what we believe in in the Irvington schools. And then, of course, wrapped around all of those items is our fiscal health and making sure that we have the resources and are beginning to plan for the future to be able to provide for high-quality learning experiences and learning environments. And as a part of this work, we step back and we think, well, geez, where do the strategic objectives come from? Where do the strategic plan come from? Well, it all started from our process a couple of years ago. But those objectives that I just referenced are all linked to our mission statement. So we think about the mission, well, that's what we're setting out to do, this is what we believe in. The vision takes it another step and starts to think about, how do you get there? And now, our strategic objectives break that down even further. And each and every year, we're going to provide more detail related to that and be able to target a number of activities and objectives that are going to guide this work. So that said, as I referenced, that we have a new structure. And we have three overarching focus areas that we're going to walk through for the board tonight. The first is focused on strategic leadership and implementing our vision for tomorrow. And that's something that I will speak to this evening. And you can see that focus area is then broken into a series of three objectives. Then, as we take a look at this next step, instructional leadership, curriculum and instruction, the work that's ongoing there and the initiatives that will come forth. And there's three objectives that we're going to address tonight, and Dr. Cora and I will present them together. And then, finally, focus area three, which is financial and operational leadership that Ms. Stein will talk about. So that said, I am eager to delve into our focus area number one, which is our strategic leadership and implementing our vision for tomorrow. And in doing so, I first want to stop and highlight, not only do we have different structures to our goals this year, but want to take a look at the template that we utilize. So we're identifying outcomes, we're identifying activities and strategies, supporting evidence, linkage to our strategic plan, and then anticipated timelines for the completion of this work. And I do want to say that when we step back and take a look at this, I don't want you to think that what we're doing in these areas are limited to just these activities. There's going to be opportunities that come up throughout the course of the year, and there's many other aspects of this work that's really going to guide what we do. Much of this work is going to come forward in other board presentations that we'll outline later, in workshop environments where we're going to have deeper dialogue on these topics. So when we stop and we look at this first objective and looking at advancing the strategic plan, well, what can we do to lead that work? And the first item, the first activity, is something that I think is really critical for us. It's something that really speaks to, how are we going to get from point A to point B? What does our future look like? But it also tells us, what is the capacity that we have? And looking at limitations that may be before us. So the identification of long-range staffing and program needs to support the implementation of the plan. So what that really means to me is, what else do we need in Irvington? And by that identification, we're going to be able to step back and not only begin to start to plan in a more comprehensive manner, but we're going to have these benchmark programs, opportunities that we want to strive for. But in doing so, we know we're going to have to be patient. We know that we're going to have to look for the opportunities, not only to build the programs and consider the capacity that we have internally through our faculty, through our leadership team, to be able to develop those programs, but we have to importantly consider, how do we get there financially? So some of this work that's going to come out of this work this fall with our administrators is going to be something that's really ambitious, and some is going to be straightforward and you're going to hear it and say, I get it. But at the end of the day, there's going to be prioritization networks. And then, when we look at that, we're going to have the reality of, geez, how do we implement it? Are there opportunities to reorganize funding in our structures to make some of this happen, to look at services differently? Or do we step back and say, this is going to take us 10, 15 years to get there? But this is critical work, and we look forward to conversation that's going to happen this fall in this room on the subject with our administrative team. Embedded in all this work is also looking at our plan for curriculum and professional learning, which Dr. Cora is in the process of working with our team and developing. And that's looking at our known work over the next couple of years, the work that we're going to lead. How do we develop the programs that we have? How do we support the teachers today? And what are those immediate initiatives we know that we have before us? So when we talk about, later on, Dr. Cora will reference Project Lead the Way. That's an item that's been tied into this work and looking to expand that. So that's one example of program growth and development that's supported within a comprehensive plan for curriculum and professional learning. If you go back to looking at our strategic objectives, before, you know, when we talked about the objective number one, which was directly linked to the student experiences that we want our kids to have, the experiences that they deserve, technology was a key component of that. So we have a technology plan, and there's two different levels of technology plans. There's a compliance plan that we developed, that the board has approved, that we submit to the State Education Department. But then, there is our deep, meaningful technology plan that gets into what we believe in and what does technology mean to the lives of our children today, and how does it help prepare them for tomorrow? And that plan is going to be updated and revised throughout the course of this year. And then importantly, we're going to look at publishing updates and communicating, not only with the board, but the community, about our progress in all of this work and advancing the plan. When we think about the next objective, focus one, objective B, we want to identify opportunities to increase stakeholder engagement. And that's going to happen in a number of different forms. So the first opportunity that we're going to look at is the increased articulation of our objectives through the development of some simple print materials. So when we think about coming to an event at a school, when we have new families that are arriving in Irvington, when we have realtors that are looking to market properties, that they have resources to be able to turn and tell them about our Irvington schools. So that's one low-level thing. But what comes out of this for me that's really, really important is the work is that we're starting to develop a common language, a common belief system. And that not only are we going through a process and having all of our faculty and staff begin to really adapt their practice and their thinking to align to our strategic objectives, that we're going to have our community going down a similar pathway. We also want to think about how we get that message out there. And I always think about, when you ride through a college town, you know when you're there, right? There's a sense of pride that's there. You see those banners that are hanging throughout the community or on the school property. So in doing so, for a real nominal expense, I want our students, and we talk about our students being active participants in our society, I want to create a process where we're going to look to design and produce some of those banners. They're going to increase school spirit, increase pride, start to send out that Irvington message, and maybe begin to make us look like a different type of school district. And really let some of those optical things reflect on the great things that happen in each of one of our school communities. Then, of course, we're continuing to find every opportunity to align our work in the district with the strategic outcomes and objectives and thinking about how we can take these to new places. So we look at presentations such as this, the dialogue that's happening throughout the district. But then, we also step back and we think about budget and those other items to make sure that all that we do is continuing to be grounded within, in the strategic plan. So objective C, communication. So we want to do so to make sure that our community is well-informed about the work that we're doing in the schools, but also to be really engaged in things that are happening. You know, we tell the success story of our Facebook page, and it is really a powerful tool. And to sit there in my office on a daily basis and to see the flow of story ideas that are going back and forth, and then to see them within a few days or a week becoming a reality on the Facebook page, not only does it help tell a story, not only does it give a window in to what is happening in the school district, but it develops points of pride. When we step back, we think about our kids and their ability to go on Facebook with their parents and check out images of the work that they've done, or a story about what's happened or something they've experienced, I think it's outstanding. And in doing so, it helps educate our community about the greatness that occurs in our schools. But we step back, we launched a great new website back in June, and I got to tell you, the positive feedback just keeps coming in and coming in. But we need to continue to work on the website. We've done a lot of work over the summer that we'll explore in Communications Committee tomorrow morning. But how do we continue to make that a more informed, rich resource for everybody in our school community? So we have plans for the next steps that we're going to take to really begin to bolster that. One of the things that we actually already did this summer, and it was a project between Donna Friedlander, my assistant, and myself, we look at the district newsletter that goes out every single Saturday morning. So we have taken approach here that we wanted it to look different, we wanted it to be contemporary, we wanted it to be a better user experience. So we created a new template. In doing so, the template mimics the look in some of the field of the district website. Not only is it optically, visually similar in some ways, but we've embedded popular links that'll bring people to those specific pages on our website. But it is also from a user experience. It's responsive to mobile devices in ways the other one wasn't, so it'll just increase the ease of use. And I'll talk in a minute about how that tool is becoming richer as we move forward. Importantly, one thing that I think is critical to my future work is to become more deeply engaged in all different corners of our community. I'm currently in the process of working with the PTSA to be able to map out a plan for this year where we're going to have a variety of coffee or social experiences with community members. And we've done a number of different things in the past, ranging from promoting, you know, administrators coming to a general meeting of the PTSA to talk about particular topics, to having book study clubs where we read, I think, four books over my first three, four years here, where we engage community members. But considering that feedback, while those are great experiences, I'm hearing that people just want to get to know you. People just want to be able to share what's on their mind. So by having these informal conversations and not doing so in somebody's house, that idea of going to a coffee shop in town, supporting our local businesses, making a different type of experience for folks, where maybe someone could feel a little uncomfortable going to somebody's house that they don't know, but reaching out into our community and extending those opportunities for conversation. And likewise, I would like to have similar conversations with a broader scope of our school community. So our next step is looking at instructional leadership and curriculum and instruction. And Raina is going to talk to the first two objectives, and then I will jump in on objective C. So, Dr. Cora?
Sure. So, one of the things that we're actually quite proud of is the fact that we are consistently sticking with these two goals, implementing instructional practices that elevate student thinking and understanding in our second goal around assessment. So you can see on this chart that, and you've heard, that we continue to work toward having all of our unit planners completed in Rubicon Atlas. So while we would like to have all the boxes complete, really, what we want to have is a well-defined curriculum that people are using to teach clearly and cohesively and thoughtfully. And so, we continue to push this goal. It's challenging, and you've heard me say it, some levels more challenging than at others. So we have put out this guideline that says there's an expectation that our unit planners are complete and that our unit planners are developed. One of the things that I'm happy to see and be part of is actually the refinement of some of the planners. So we have unit planners that are, have been developed, the boxes have been filled in, but now, teachers are starting to use those planners and see how well they're aligned or how well they're written or where they need revision. So as part of a district, as you would imagine, with the number of teachers we have, our teachers are on a continuum. We have some teachers who started early on, and they were early adopters, and so they had planners very early on, they're in revision mode. We have some people who are coming on a little bit more slowly and have learned over time how to use the planner and how to develop their curriculum using the unit planner and the UBD framework. So we continue on that journey, and I'll just link it to the third row, which is around the professional development and the use of our PLRD days. And so, one of the great --
Since the early use of that, could you just tell us what PLRD is?
Professional Learning Release Days.
Plurds.
Everybody's going to know what they are.
No, we're not saying plurds. We're really trying not to use that language. It sounds like a cartoon or something. So we're calling them PLRD days, and they are those Early Release Wednesdays. And we're excited. Our building administration and our department leaders have really started to plan and think about how to make the most use. And obviously, there's a million things we could do with those hours, but we're very focused, especially in the first half of the year, of being in those unit planners, making sure that they're getting done in the way that we want them to be developed. So that link between the development of the unit planners and the PLRD days is pretty well-defined for us at this point. The other area of focus, as you know, we are very excited to have rolled out our K2 PLTW. So some of you may know Alyssa Fisher was, has been a teacher in district for many years. She was a kindergarten teacher, she was a first-grade teacher, she was a second-grade teacher, and she's now the teacher for our K2 PLTW program. So we have just started launching that. Those Project Lead the Way sessions, our classroom teachers go with the students to Project Lead the Way. It's not a special, and so the teachers are there and they're part of the work. And the expectation around that is, obviously, we're also trying to build our teachers' capacity around STEM-based curriculum. And moving forward, there'll be some nice links to science. And so, the fact that our teachers are in the classroom during Project Lead the Way will also help them make science connections over time as we roll out the Next Gen Science Standards, or, I'm sorry, the New York State Science Learning Standards. So the rollout of the K2 has given us an opportunity to now say that, A, we have a K-12 curriculum, but also Jesse Lubinski has really taken on the leadership of this. So this is now a department. So what kind of started out is, you know, one teacher at the high school who was teaching an engineering course, and another teacher at the middle school who was providing technology curriculum for our middle school students, has really now unfolded into a department. And that department, and this is exactly where I think we would want to be, which is, that department not only has teachers of technology, but we have science teachers teaching these Project Lead the Way courses. We have Patsy Costabile, who is technically in the art department. It's a real STEAM approach to the work that we're doing, and there's many advantages to it. But I would say the number-one advantage in my mind is that you access all kinds of kids. So different students have different entry points into this program, and that's really what we hope for. So Jesse Lubinski is working with the, and leading this work so that they now meet on a regular basis as a department, and they're beginning to articulate, what are we seeing? Oh, this is what we're seeing in fourth and fifth grade, or this is what we were seeing in third grade. Oh, wait a minute, I'm doing that right now in seventh grade. So if we have students who are coming up with that skill set and the understanding of the design process so early on, how will that ultimately allow us to elevate our curriculum and our instruction at the middle school level? So this, go ahead, Beth.
I'm sorry, that was new to me. So we have a new department, and it's PLTW department?
No, the Technology Department, as a result of Project Lead the Way, we have more teachers engaged in that. So what's happened is, our technology teachers at the middle level in seventh and eighth grade are implementing the Project Lead the Way curriculum. So this is, and it's a good place to stop because I think one of the things that we're going to work through, probably also through the development of the technology plan, is who are all these people and what umbrella do they fit under? And Jesse and I talked for a long time the other day about how to name people and where should people be called. I was doing, reviewing the directory that comes out internally today, and in one school, it said PLTW teachers, and it named Alyssa Fisher and Gwen Carney. And then, in another school, it said technology teachers. And, you know, I think we're at a good place because we have all these different people, but it probably is a good time for us to figure out and define, who are these people and what are we calling them? And I think the reason we do it at the middle school is because there is a required curriculum at the middle level, whereas the work that we're doing at every other level is just part of the program and the opportunities here in Irvington. So it's, so that department is evolving. I would say linked to it, sort of maybe living in parallel, is the work that Jesse's going to start doing this year with the librarians around inquiry, because a lot of the work around technology and the work of PLTW is really inquiry-based. It's really trying to --
Sorry, you call them librarians?
Yeah, library media specialists, librarians.
Good, okay, because in the budget --
Good, okay, because in the budget discussions, we go back and forth.
We do go back and forth. It's one of those things. It's like-
Now you're talking about technology.
Reading teachers, literacy specialists.
New schools, library media specialists.
You know, I think library media specialist is almost old again. I think, I think some people would rather be called librarians again. I think they got lost in that other world.
But just the association with the technology and-
Well, you know, I think that that's why what we're trying to link it to is this whole idea of inquiry, because the idea is to get kids thinking and engaged and wondering and curious and creative and innovative, and all of those pieces that fit under our strategic goals and our theories of action really ultimately lead to this idea of our kids being inquisitive and inquiry being at the heart of it. So this whole evolution that I'm talking about started as this implementation of STEM and Project Lead the Way, but as you know, and for those of you who have been able to come to the science fairs, you've seen like the reach beyond it, beyond what, it's not just Project Lead the Way, that's just one curriculum we're using. It's really about the kind of learning that we want embedded at all of our levels and opportunities for kids. So in looking at this goal of implementing instructional practices that elevate student thinking and understanding, it's everywhere. There is nothing that's going on in any of our schools that isn't touching this idea. And having teaching thinking as part of the unit planner demands that when teachers are creating these units in Rubicon Atlas, that they're saying, what kind of thinking am I asking my students to do and how do we align that work? So through all of our various supports right now, which is Bard Writing and Metamorphosis Math and certainly the work, or World Language work at 612, all of these speak to that idea of how do we develop curriculum and how do we know that our curriculum demands three key components: content, skills, and thinking. And there isn't a teacher, I don't believe in our district right now, who doesn't know that that's the expectation for instructional design. Getting there's hard. This is really hard work. I never underestimate, or I never minimize how difficult this work is, but we just see that our teachers are getting better and better at naming it and being explicit. So our focus around implementing instructional practices, it's consistent, it's consistent across all of our buildings, and I think each year now, whether you like the format or not, I think each year our administrators have been able to come here and show you examples of how we're doing this level of work in our classrooms on a daily basis. So in our second objective or goal, develop a balanced assessment system that measures students' content knowledge, skills, and dispositional thinking. As you can see, we have this, again, it links back to our instructional practices and our unit planners, which is linking stage two. So I've already been involved in many conversations in just these first, in this first month of school around, do your assessments align with what you're asking kids to do in your daily instruction? Or is your unit planner articulating one thing, but then you're coming into work and you're doing something else because it's what you've always done? Doesn't mean it's bad, by the way, it just may not be aligned. One of the shifts that we were able to do over these past couple of weeks in a couple of settings is we started to revise our unit planners, and in doing that, we started to, our ELA planners, we've started to look at the Next Gen ELA standards. So part of our alignment and our assessment is making sure that our ELA standards are up to date. I think I might have shared this, oh, maybe it was at curriculum committee the other day. We have an evolution process now that is natural and I think a healthy process. It's where you look at your unit planner and you say, are the standards we're teaching to still the current standards for New York State? Oh, they're not. We need to go in and we need to get rid of what I'm calling the Common Core standards and putting in the Next Gen standards. So developing this timeline for the alignment of assessments with unit planners also demands that we're making sure that our standards are where they need to be and that the teachers are prepared to teach to the standards. I will give New York State a little bit of credit, which I rarely do, which is to say that they actually did streamline the standards in some pretty nice ways, and I think they're going to make it easier for the teachers to, to integrate, and I think it makes more sense. We had many elementary teachers who really felt the standards were not appropriate, and that's a push and pull for us as a district. How do we say those standards are not appropriate but force teach, or I shouldn't say force, ask teachers to teach standards that we don't believe are really the right standards developmentally? And yet, we know that they may create assessments that align with those standards. So that's the push and pull that we live with every day. So this whole idea of aligning our assessments and making sure our standards are in place is critical and a key component in activity slash strategy for us this year. Capstone projects. So we are launching the conversation with a think tank of teachers and administrators, really looking at what a capstone project could be. So just as a point about what a capstone project is, a capstone can be a lot of different things, but basically, it's some sort of performance-based assessment that demands students, gives students the opportunity to demonstrate the knowledge, skill, and thinking that they have accrued over time. So you, I guess you could do a capstone project every year, but it's not really in the spirit of what a capstone is. A capstone is an opportunity to take multiple years of learning and allow students to create something. Very often, it's student-driven, you want something that students are interested in, and through that area of interest, students can demonstrate their knowledge, skill, thinking, and very often their, their creativity, their curiosity, and it's a place where you would define it at certain levels. That is yet to be determined because we just started the conversation, but capstones, when we talk about a balanced assessment system, capstone projects are really, would be one key component in demonstrating that we have a balanced way of that we're assessing our students over time. So we assess students year to year, and then we would want to, we want to be assessing students over time. It's also a way for us to assess ourselves, obviously, our curriculum, our expectations, and the work we're asking students to do. Last year, at the end of the year, we, we shared with you our model for program assessment. So this year, with each new initiative, you'll be seeing the program assessment profile, which will lay out the goals, the expectations, and the multi-year plan for anything that we're launching over time. So that is one way that we're approaching balanced assessment. We're constantly having conversations about how are we assessing in the classroom? How are we using data? I had a great conversation today with Nancy Deek, our instructional coach, who's getting ready to work with a team of teachers, and we're talking about looking at the FNP, the Fanta-Simpinell Assessment that we give our stu, that we use with our students, our Ames Web Data, our Foundations Data, and our, and Lexiles, and the relationship between Lexiles, the reading level, and the Fanta-Simpinell. So these are the kinds of conversations that are just happening on a regular basis. At the end of the day, I met with actually Andrea Cantor, the Assistant Principal at Dow's, and she was like head over heels, saying she had the most amazing RTI session today where teachers were coming in, and in the past, a teacher would come in and sort of want to just talk about a student. She said, everybody who walked through the door today came in with data. Everybody walked through the door today saying, here's what I've tried, here's my intervention, here's what I'm doing. And that's the kind of work we want to see on a daily basis. It says, we're using data and data is informing our thinking, our practice, our decision-making, and that's the goal. And that's the goal that we've been talking about for the last two years, as I've shared certain examples, and now with each day that goes by, we see more and more, it is becoming the language of, the language of our classrooms, our district, and our systems. And that, to me, is the goal.
So we've gotten to the waist?
What?
We're past the toe, we're at the ankle, we've gotten to the waist.
We're getting, I would say more maybe mid-thigh, Dave.
Mid-thigh, I would stay away from that.
But I, I appreciate the optimism. And as I think Raina spoke, it's a nice segue into this work. So when we think about balanced assessment, we also want to kind of have a balanced approach to our, our use of data and understanding that data serves a variety of different purposes and that data looks different for different types of things. So, you know, we've had conversations in this room where we talk about the idea of what are examples of data? And, and there's that traditional sense, pure statistics and numbers, right? Number of kids doing this, number of kids doing this at X level, how do different types of data sets correlate? And that's the path that we're on, is to developing more measures and better resources for us in that front, and that's the bottom activity that we're focused on this year. But we should be stepping back and taking a look at other opportunities that really exist to be able to see how we're doing. And this is going to be, you know, an area where there's lots of growth that has to happen, and we've been real, real sincere in acknowledging that, but understanding that in our process and where we've been successful over six-plus years in this district is that idea of being very deliberate in our work, being able to support our staff members, have them be comfortable to work, and provide the support for them to be able to engage in it successfully. So that is woven throughout all that we do, but there's some things that we step back on that are going to be a little bit more concrete in areas that we're going to look at numbers. So for example, one thing and one discussion that we need to start to have is about discipline. You know, so what is, you know, we have periodically a handful of students that are suspended. We have DASSA, which are Bullying, Dignity for All Students Act, cases that, that are reported and are investigated throughout the course of a school year. And, you know, we're, being a small district, at times, those incidents are far and few between, but what we haven't done during those periods of time, we've become very incelerian and look at those, those incidents, and they become real kid-centered, and think about the dynamics of a particular situation or the needs of the kids that are involved in the matter. But what we haven't done, we haven't stepped back and say, well, maybe it's only a handful of isolated cases here and there through, in each school throughout the school year, but are there trends and patterns that start to emerge from that? And I'll be the first to say that, you know, this is something that could be informative to the administrative team, that could lead to good conversations in schools, but it's something that could be, lead to good conversation, but it may lead to some really difficult conversations to have. So when I step back and, and we want to draw correlations to different things, and I do not want to insert, I do not want to infer something that may not be there. But we've had shifts in demographics in our school community. We have more students that are English language learners, we have more students of color, students coming from different cultures, we have more students that are economically disadvantaged than we've ever had before. You've heard me say before that when I got here in 2012, we had about 3% free and reduced lunch. Now we're teetering between nine and 10%. So that tells all kinds of stories. You know, you could find research about readiness associated with these different factors. You could find many different things you could point to, and like, I don't want to jump in and, and start to give a dissertation on the topic, but this may be another window into how we need to start to look at our community a little differently and be responsive to everybody that's here. So this shift that we've seen, we walk into our classrooms, whether at the high school or Dow's Lane, things may look different. There may be more kids that are coming in and speaking different languages than we've experienced before, but this is one window to start to look at how all this shakes out and start to tell a story. We need to be responsive to our school community. And when I say that, you know, it may be that we sit here at some point and have a conversation and say, folks, this doesn't look so good. And the numbers may be small, but small is still individuals, it's still our school community, it's still our culture. So this is an area where we're going to start off looking at data through the course of a school year and produce some, some regular reports to reflect upon, but at the end of the day, we may step back and say, you know, we got a bigger discussion to have here. And this is an area that we're going to need to, to be courageous and do the right thing by kids and for our community.
I just want to underline that point, that, that really is, is the goal, is that we're doing right by all our students and providing equity in terms of how we-
It's what we do every day, right? So, you know, we apologized to the public before that we had to extend an executive session and go into recess, and, and when we did so, that was all about conversations about supporting the needs of kids, protecting the interests of the school district. And, and so, you know, as an educator, you know, I can't tell you that there isn't a day that goes by that when I'm not here on a weekend, or I'm driving home or driving in, my mind is always about our kids. When we think about crisis situations that occur in other communities, it's tragic what happens, it's happened in other places, and we look at kids that are disadvantaged, that aren't getting services, when you look at episodes of school violence, there are other places, and it's tragic, and it touches, touches all of our souls, but at the end of the day, what's the lesson to be learned from those incidents, those situations for us here in Irvington? And we need to have a more global view, right? If we go back to our technology plan, and one of our objectives is global learning, well, we as adults got to participate in, in that level as well. So when we think about where we are, there's, there's more work to be done, and this is kind of, you know, Dave's sticking our toe in. We're not up to our waist or thigh there, we're just getting our toe in this, but we'll see where it goes. You know, when we, Raina referenced end-of-year presentations before, we talked about, you know, evidence that had been presented in the past. And, you know, as our principals, as us as, as leaders in your district, when we step back and we see that little video snippet of a kid, or we see work products, like, we get excited over it because it's progress. It tells us a story about the work that's happening, how things are changing, and what's happening in classrooms, right? How we're achieving those two overarching instructional goals, Objective A and B. But we see it on a daily basis, and when you as a board, as a community, watching from here or on video, well, sometimes what is missed is the context around some of those situations. So this winter, we want to be able to schedule and plan some targeted school visits where we're actually going to take the board into our schools, and we're going to go in with a question, we're going to go in, and we're going to see learning and instruction come to life. And those are going to be different data points for you, yeah, different data points for you to be able to walk away with another data set, to be able to help inform your thinking about how we're doing, because you're seeing things through a different lens than this room, or through the stories that you hear from your kids, or the presentations and programs that you, that you attend in our community. So we think that's going to be a nice point of growth for us. You know, when we step back and we think about where we are, we know we administered a survey back in the spring, and we had an informative presentation from our partners at K-12 Insight. Next month, we are going to have a learning session that is going to be facilitated by K-12 Insight, and we're going to come in and we're going to delve into some of those, those real clear takeaways for us, and then the questions going to come out of it, and some of it could be district-wide. And I can tell you, when I sat back over the summer and I reflected on my planning, and when Dr. Korf and Stein and I spent time in August and planning together, which that work is representative, and this product that you're seeing tonight, there was layers of that survey that built into my mind. And when I think about community engagement, when I think about our newsletters, I think about the coffees, all those things, it's connect, in my mind, not only was it need, not only was it strategic plan, but there were takeaways that came from the survey. So here, we're going to look to take some next steps, we're going to look to take meaning out of this. And then the one question that comes out of this is, two questions maybe, one is, so what are the takeaways and what are we going to do with that information? And that's yet to be seen, because we're going to be going through the processes and administrative team together next month. And then the one other bigger question is looking at, well, do we survey again or do we not survey again? And if we survey again, is it now or next year? One real complicating factor associated with this is that New York State, under the ESAP Plan, that, which is federal education law, there's a requirement for a school climate survey. So what has happened in the past in New York, what has happened in other states, that there's an approved set of surveys or tools that you could select from. So much like when we talk about APPR, there were a set of different evaluation instruments you can, through your negotiation process with your bargaining units, you could select the tool that you're going to use. What, New York is going down a path now of saying that we may have one singular survey and one survey that has to be administered in all of our schools. So the conversation that I had with K-12 Insight, and I just came from the state superintendent's convention today, and speaking to the K-12 people there, is, so how does the work that we've done and the direction New York is going align or conflict? And Celia Anderson, who's one of our partners, when I swung by their booth at one point to speak to them, she's held up New York's ESAP Plan and said, Chris, in my free time this week, I'm, I'm reading this, because we're looking for answers, as the, you know, we want it to be meaningful. So we don't want to send out surveys that have conflicting messages or conflicting questions, but at the same time, we also have to recognize that we don't want to overwhelm our school community and send out two surveys that are going to be very similar to each other. So there, we're waiting for some direction on all of that, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward. But the more concrete type of stuff that I know that the board has been interested in is, is the numbers piece. And we've been real transparent in recognizing that there's growth there. There's growth not only in developing the necessary systems, but developing a culture wherein data is valued and appreciated, and isn't neglected or ignored for whatever the politics are around state tests, or the idea of learning something additional that is new on top of all the heavy lifting that's being led from the curriculum front. But we want to step back and be able to develop a system that's going to be able to help us tell stories, to be able to help us understand how our kids are doing and how programs are doing. So this is a process this year where we're spending time reinventing one position that we have in the district, which is entitled the Data Manager. And in doing so, we're actually taking a couple- And in doing so, we're actually taking a couple pretty big steps. The first is actually developing a portal, right? And using resources that we have and things that folks are familiar with, by taking those data sets that we have out there and think back to the discussions that Raina's led related to RTI and AmesWeb, RTIM Direct as a portal. Well, we have the ability to now put other data sets into RTIM Direct. So when we look at our students that are going through their Irvington career, so they're gonna have all these elementary assessments that will be able to show growth, we're gonna be able to start to upload and insert into that portal state test scores. When we think of other assessments that we have across the district that we're implementing and those that we keep committing to building, Apple is another example, our World Language Proficiency Assessment, we'll be able to start to put that information in there. So first step is that teachers are going to be able to log in and look at the data all in one commonplace. And there's going to be opportunities for learning that's gonna come out of that and how they use this, how they interpret it. And then the next step after building this database is the analytics. So where are we gonna be able to take a couple data sets and start to draw correlations? Be able to connect dots and say, hey, kids are doing well in these areas, but in these areas it doesn't align? Or, we're doing great here and we're doing great here, that's super, let's move on to something else, or let's dig in and see how or why we're doing so well here. And then through time, we're gonna be able to continue to build those data sets, whether benchmark assessments and other experiences that kids have that are evaluating their learning and their growth, and to be able to have it in this place. So as we go through the course of this year, there's a couple different steps that we're taking that we think are real important. One is the identification of data sets and the uploading them into this singular portal to support staff and understanding the resources that are there for them and give them some windows into how they can begin to utilize this data. And then for us to step back and identify a few examples of where we can start to try to draw correlations among a variety of data sets, one or two, two or three, wherever that may be, but mindful, we're gonna start small. And then when we say, well, what does that look like? Our objective is, when we look at our board meeting presentation calendar, our workshop calendar, in April is the Student Performance Report. So in doing so, one of our goals is that we wanna be able to kinda re-envision that a little bit, and we wanna be able to start to introduce some of these new ideas that we have and some of the new correlations that we're able to draw from our student data sets. And now we move on to Ms. Stein, who's gonna talk about our focus in and around financial and operational leadership.
So obviously, the Business Office and Operations is really in the support role, as it says, supports the strategic plan and the district's finances and operations. And, you know, we feel that our role is important to steward the resources that support everything that you've just heard. So all those good things that you've just heard, that's basically what we now have to do is provide the resources for that. So we focus on the financial resources and keeping us in sound shape there, and also the support of facilities, food services, transportation, and things like that. So last year, you know, we kinda focused a lot on several areas, one was open contracts and negotiations, we're still focusing on that, and you'll see that in the objectives. We did a lot of review of facilities last year, which is informing us for the capital project planning that was still ongoing, and that's, you'll see that as well. I worked a lot on budgeting and the process and getting that, you know, somewhat organized for basically, so I could work with it and inform you guys in making a sound budget. And we also had the food contract last year, so those were some of the major areas last year. So now this year, we're gonna focus a little bit differently, and one of them is really the long-term finance plan, the long-term financial plan, and this is something we should have. It's something I've been wanting to do since I started, but basically, it's one of those things where until you've got a sense of the district and a sense for the issues, it's very difficult to even do. So this is about the right time for me to really work on it now anyway. And what I plan on doing is working on the, doing it, approaching it like basically for three aspects, taking the, looking at all the history of the last, you mostly focus on five years, you could go back depending on how much you need, but looking at trend analysis. And then you use that information to inform your assumptions and what you want to then put going forward. And not only that, but you also have to look at what you're planning on doing. So we need to figure out what initiatives we're gonna be doing, what resources we need. So that all is gonna go into the financial plan. Then you have to look at some of your key sensitivities, you know, CRS rates, things that are variables that are outside your control, the tax cap. You can put in assumptions for all that, and then I also will create.
You mentioned, so CRS is a teacher retirement.
Teacher retirement system and ERS, which is the employees' retirement system, and those are matches that we have to pay for our employees, and that's a percentage that's assigned to us by the state, we don't really have a choice. But it's a big part of our financial benefits budget. Same thing with health insurance, things like that, we can control it to some degree, but we also have to plan for it, because it's a benefit we've already contractually are obligated to pay for our employees. So some of these bigger areas, we have to then consider that what rates may might be increasing and look at some sensitivities on those. So, you know, some things worry me, there's really no good crystal ball with this, but I will make some different scenarios and we'll play things out and we'll come up with a plan that we, that I will then present to you in different aspects. So that's one of the objectives this year. The other main objective is the capital bond project that we wanna put up for a public referendum sometime in the spring, and we've worked a lot on that last year and we're gonna continue working on that now. Again, I gave a presentation on that at our last meeting, and you can look at that presentation, but there's a lot of work to be done on that in terms of now really narrowing down the scope of what we're doing, and then all of the next pieces that have to happen to make that happen. And then finally, we have still two open contracts, which I will be focusing on in terms of the analysis and modeling for how to settle those contracts and, again, provide resources, happy staff, but also things that we can afford as a district. So those are the three major areas that I'll be focusing on, there's also lots of other more small things, but we will combine them.
And that goes well beyond all the crises that pop up from facilities and managing transportation and food services and lots of people and money. You know, when we look at that last item that Carol just spoke of, we can't help but ignore the connection that it has to the first item in settling contracts and understanding the impacts and looking at longer-range financial plans. Certainly, we're very pleased to have had the IFA contract settled at the end of last year, but these are other important pieces to help inform that work. So when we think about where we are and now having the opportunity to have talked through these high-level objectives for the school district, we have to think about, well, how is this achievement gonna be talked about, how are we gonna learn about it? So we have a series of workshops that I'll reference in a second, and so we're gonna look for examples of that work coming out through those forums. We know that mid-year, we've enjoyed having our Board of Ed Administrative Roundtable, and we have one of those, again, scheduled this winter. We have end-of-year school-based or department-based presentations that will look and feel a little bit different again than last year, and you'll see evidence of the school-based work coming forward in those presentations. And then we talk about published reports. So I reference the idea of having a published report related to the local goals that is school and department. Raina spoke about program assessment, there's gonna be opportunities where there are published reports, we simply cannot do all the work and have all the conversation in board meetings. And then we look for those opportunities for newsletter updates and website publications. So just simply to point to the last two district newsletters, there were two articles in there that spoke specifically to the strategic plan and that articulation that I see as an objective for the school district. So there's gonna be examples that are gonna happen throughout the course of the school year, some that are gonna be real obvious, because we're gonna be here talking about it, and the others are those that, you know, the challenge is to see if you pick them up along the way. So when we look at the course of the school year, there's a number of presentations, and as we know, when we look at workflow and we reflect on these goals of these different workshop topics, sometimes we kinda flip the order around to be able to equip us to develop the best possible product. So tonight, you can see that we have a goal presentation, and then a workshop related to technology and PLTW in October. Let's not overlook, on the 23rd, we have Board of Ed recognition as well on that day. Then work related to the long-range plan, and that will tie in a bunch of different areas, so some strategic plan updates, looking at the future needs that I referenced before. So you're seeing right there, two goals aligned, then look at financial planning, a third goal aligned into one workshop environment. Curriculum and PD plan updates. So right there, we have three months in a row, October, November, December, that directly speak to updates related to goals. In January, we're looking at our administrative roundtable, and that will be introduced another and a different type of touch point. And then we jump into our budget season, and we know that really takes over. And so we will dedicate a series of meetings to the development of our district budget for 1920. And then on the night of the adoption, typically, that's a pretty routine meeting, that we're gonna delve into the Student Performance Report, and again, I note examples of expanded data focus. So again, another goal that's being referenced here and be able to have insight into our progress. And then finally, looking in May and June, having school-based presentations, breaking K-5 and 612 on two separate nights. And then finally, wrapping up the school year with some thoughts, just like we did back in July, about our direction for next year. So we're really proud of this work. I hope, again, you see that alignment, you know, when we've talked about the presentations that have come from our administrative team over the years, the one thing that's become abundantly clear is that alignment, K-12, to hear that common language, to see the linkage of the work, the progression of the work, whether things are happening consistently throughout the district at the same time, or watching work grow from one place to another. I hope that in this presentation and these objectives tonight, you see that growing linkage, the use of the strategic plan, a focus on evidence, that idea of having a smart approach, thinking that we have to be practical and know that these are achievable goals, that they're realistic here, and that we're looking to measure. And we're continuing down that path of continuing to really expand our work on that front. So we're proud of where we are, we know that like any place, any system, any organization, school district, we have room to grow. But Irvington's a great place, and our kids are fortunate to be educated here, and we're proud to be a part of the team.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the work and the thinking that has gone into this, and to segue from where you left off to our questions now. Obviously, this is a goal presentation, and as you were stating, I appreciate that we can see in many cases, the linkages directly to either in reports or future board presentations, the opportunity to drill down on some of these areas that the plans are being developed that sort of flesh out, you know, what these goals are. So, you know, with that in mind, I guess, you know, this is a different format, but maybe that we would go through these in terms of questions that you have, you know, just page by page, and certainly, again, that we have the chance, in many cases, to circle back in future meetings. So I think the opportunity here is to sort of get some clarification around some of the goals, and, but maybe, I'll just keep an eye out if we start to do a deep dive on something that may be becoming outsized in the conversation and that we'll have other opportunities to talk about. So with that, the Objective A, Focus One, Objective A, advancing the strategic plan. I don't know if somebody already has some question or two from that section that they'd like to start us off with in terms of questions, and David, do you have a smile?
Yeah, I'm smiling.
Just a reminder, you know, we're really working hard to try to enhance our audio quality for the meetings.
Yes.
So when you go to speak, please grab that mic and put it right in front of your mouth to help us out, please.
Some people are coming to the meeting because they can't hear the video when they watch the video.
That's what we want. It's deliberate.
I see that.
It's deliberate.
A lot of them here today. And then I'll say also, we'll, don't let me forget to provide an opportunity at the end for any community questions.
I'm very easy, and I only have three questions spread out across the presentation, which I thank you very much for, it was an excellent presentation.
Cool. So one of them sits within this focus.
Focus One, Objective A, correct?
That's correct.
So update district plan for curriculum and professional learning, thank you for your attention to this, I know we've been asking after this for a minute. I just wondered, if you go down to that last slide, the correlation between the timeline of September, October 2018, you're not doing the presentation until...
Which one?
The curriculum and PD plan, the presentation's not happening until the 18th of December. Is that intentional, or is it, I'd wonder if maybe if the timeline speaks to September, October, that that might be better served at the November 20th meeting, or maybe, I'm sorry, the October 23rd meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, so, no, thank you for the question, I think that's some of the logistics that I referenced before when I was looking at that second to last slide, and really mapping out, you know, workflow. So, you know, certainly I think we, for and everybody be well-equipped to be able to deliver that presentation and that report on that night. But honestly, where I'm stepping back and having a little bit of pause is thinking about that really heavier visionary work related to the more global future needs and all those areas, if you remember the slide, like, I pointed to like three or four items that I deliberately listed there, not just the topic, that are all tied in the strategic plan. So that idea of us having that internal conversation about, well, hey, if we have to make some adjustments, that may be a consideration.
That was it.
But I just wanna, one thing I wanna be honest, too, is that I try to respect and value the workload of my colleagues, and so some initial take was the timeliness and the engagement and the level of effort that goes into that. So some of the pacing was really related to that, is that, yeah, yeah, trying to help people a bit.
Other questions from this area? All right, you want, just in general, I really appreciate the breakout of, you know, of this format. One, and it speaks partly to what you were just saying, is in terms of workload, capacity, but also just for us to have our minds' eye who's doing the work. In some, you know, the way this is presented, obviously, at the top level, you know, when we're talking about strategy, you're the superintendent, we're talking about instruction, that's, you know, your gig in terms of finances. But in some ways, you know, you mentioned Jesse in this area, or I almost wonder if there's a column that sort of helps us situate, you know, kind of who owns certain areas, or if that's an additional piece of information, because I think in our, you know, when we hear about the many different initiatives that are going on, it's helpful from a board point of view to understand, you know, what the, you know, what that load is in different areas, and so just a consideration as we move forward about, you know, maybe we could in some way, you know, as this evolves, as we see plans, to be able to understand that who, you know, is it a committee and who's that committee, is it, you know, one or two administrators, is it a team? Would be helpful.
Well, I appreciate the feedback, and I think, you know, as we reflect on some of our committee work, there may be opportunities for that level of engagement there. When I step back and I look at this as a high-level district plan, I caution us not to get too deep into the weeds related to.
Right, I was talking about, when we start to see the plans, it would be great to understand what, who sort of owns that process in terms of leading it and who's involved in the process. So if it's, you know, sometimes it's a little opaque for us to understand who's on the committee or, you know, what the feedback loops are with stakeholders.
Yeah, certainly, again, something to reflect on, and when we think of district-level plans, we gotta think about what they're intended to communicate, and the intention here and the goal here is to identify our work and identify the commitment that we're making to move our district forward. And some of that particular nuance, I don't know is, if it's necessary from a community level, I think, again, that's where we can have productive dialogue at our committee level, but I think it's something that we need to reflect on and something that we need to make sure that we're managing well. I don't know, when we think of publicly communicated documents and if something goes great, we wanna give accolades, and if there's an area we don't make as much progress as we want, I don't want someone going and pointing fingers at someone on our team because we didn't get there, because there's a million things that could happen along that journey to getting to that point. So I appreciate the feedback, and it'll be something that we'll certainly consider to reflect.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and we'll, as always, it's an ongoing conversation. In terms of, I just wanted to step back to, with when we talked about our strategic vision, the number five, the strength in local connections and particularly the ownership of schools.
Which one?
You know, when I look at the strategic objective alignment and what, you know, the selection of which items, you know, one thing that's, that I, you know, I raised right now and we'll, you know, we'll have opportunities to circle back to, are those feedback loops in terms of when we make plans, when we have initiatives, you know, are we taking into account the communication and feedback loops with stakeholders? And so, I don't know if I, I just wanted to... And so, I don't know if I, I just wanted to hear your perspective of when you think about ownership of schools. Is there, you know, what, how do you perhaps define that in some ways? Because when I look at it, in some ways, I started to see, oh, maybe that's a relationship to students having ownership of, you know, for example, the Capstone Project. Whereas, I maybe have a broader sense that that ownership is that relationship in terms of the feedback loops of stakeholders, the board, community members, students.
So, when I, when I look at the strategic objectives in general, being a high-achieving school district, one where we're consistently aspirational, each and every one of these doesn't exist without the other. So, there's linkage that I see that's woven for every single one. So, if you were to look at the, all the plans that we presented tonight, Objective Number Six appears the least often. But realistically, every other one couldn't happen without Objective Number Six.
That's right.
So, we have to think of how, of everything is intertwined. So, when we think about, you know, students, for example, we say ownership of our schools, we're talking about the active participants in society, we're talking about innovation, creativity, risk-taking, we're talking about having rigorous, authentic learning experiences. So, I see that woven through there. When I step back, I'm thinking about a couple of different points. One being that articulation of who we are, what we believe in, and starting to engage in different types of experiences, where we're really opening the doors and wanting to have meaningful conversation and takeaways from situations. When we talk about feedback loops, I would like to reflect back to May and having the administration of that survey. That was a big step for our school district, right? And I got to tell you, there's lots of people that are anxious to get that kind of data back, right? Entering this data world, whether it's a community survey, or looking at how my kids are doing over the course of how many years, there's anxiety associated with that. So, when we think about ownership, we're thinking about people's opportunity to participate, people's opportunity to have a say. But how do you do that, and how do you provide that? Feedback loops and engagement, to me, are two very different things. And we need to step back, and we need to be real cautious to say where we need and where we want feedback loops, rather than just saying we're providing the feedback loops. Because I got to tell you, you have a lot of smart, hard-working people working for you, and the work that we're paid to do is to make decisions on behalf of our kids. And we do that through alignment with all these different things, our mission, our vision, our strategic plan, our strategic objection, objectives, our theories of action. So, there's a piece to it that we own, we own work here. But we got to identify the right opportunities for feedback loops. And there's some times, unfortunately, that where there's a reality, where we have to make a decision, and our journey and our commitment is to engage people and process, that we do get some feedback and help that inform next steps, but then there's other times where we need to educate and inform. So, we have to be real thoughtful and step back and think, so where are those opportunities where we really want value and need that feedback? And where are those other opportunities where we say, you know, we got to make a decision, recognizing the collective smarts and experience that sit within the district or among board members? So, it's a deep question with a long answer. But it's something that I don't think there's a clear-cut answer to. I think every situation looks a little different.
Yeah. Well, I think we try, as we engage in the process, to use the language that we hear used. So, one thing that I hear there, and that I'll be interested to explore a little bit more, is your understanding of engagement versus feedback loops. Because that, clearly, they're very distinctive for you, and so, it would be helpful for me and perhaps others to understand that distinction in your mind, so that we're more careful when we use those terms. But I appreciate that, that, you know, in the thinking, that you are considering those opportunities in terms of whether that's engagement or feedback loops.
So, two real obvious feedback loops, right? The idea of a survey, and that's big and profound, and we got some great reports that came out of it. We have administrators that are engaging in a half-day workshop next month, and it's going to lead to future work. I already identified takeaways from me personally in leading the district, that is, informed work from that survey experience. When we're talking about the coffees that I'm going to facilitate with the partnership of the PTASA, that's opportunity for engagement, but it's opportunity for feedback. But then, engagement, how does it look? And it's the little things that we talked about, like little things that I'm not even going to talk to you about. But when, like, when we think about the Saturday District Newsletter, that was always an opt-in thing in the past. And to me, it was like, what the heck are we opting in? Like, that's a message that every household needs to get in our school community. We have other people that aren't connected with the schools that want to opt-in. We're going to opt you in, but you know what? I made a decision, everybody's getting it. And that's because I want to increase that level of engagement. I want people to be informed. So, there's going to be things that are real direct, and I made the decision, that's what we're doing. We're not going to sit around and talk about it, because it's good for kids, it's good for the community. So, it looks and feels different all over the place.
Yeah, great. So, we'll move on, because I don't want to take over here, to Objective B in Focus One. Are there any, I see, I see a hand at the end of the...
Finger.
A finger.
Finger has been raised. So...
Ms. Prover.
Actually, in Objective B, this sort of...
Beth, just grab that mic, please.
Like this.
Or you can put it down, but nearby, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, when we're talking about Objective B, there's sort of a linkage to something that Michael was talking about, and I guess I was waiting until we got to Objective B. So, when we talk about, and this is a question I also want to explore, and I'm not trying to drill down too hard, but when we look at number five that we were just discussing about local connections to and ownership of schools, I just want to point out that the balance seems to be about what we tell people, but it's extremely important to also have a way for the community, aside from just parents. As you yourself just said, the community goes beyond just the parents of people who are in our schools, K through twelve, to have opportunities. And I think part of it's already on the website, where you have an ability for people to communicate through the website with the district. But I wanted to know, do you see that as part of it, too? That you do want to also hear opportunities in the community, resource sharing in the community? I know that for the budget, we have some services sharing, so I just wanted to hear a little bit about that part, how the community speaks back to the district.
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, Beth. I think, and I spoke to some of it in my response to Michael's last question or point, but there's pieces to that work that we do every day, that's embedded in the day-to-day. And so, one of my colleagues is famous to saying, well, you know, or asking the question, what's a goal versus just what is the work? And some of that is what I see, and I think we believe as being the work. So, some is real clear and transparent in the fact that some of the things that we do, the videos are out there. This room, unfortunately, is empty. How do we take efforts to draw people to come to these seats? Despite poor turnout related to, you know, budget presentations, we continue to strive to do that. We get message out in different ways each year, trying to connect with folks. We have different types of budget conversations we're committed to. One of my highlights of the year is doing, having the budget discussion at the senior center. So, there's those levels of engagement that occur on a regular basis. But, yeah, there's, there's got to be reflection and opportunity to look to how you expand there, you know? Some of the things I talked about are one window in. Moving along, Mr. Hannah.
Sure. I'm just waiting one question.
You know, I think there's a bunch of areas, rather than going by page by page, if there's just some questions that we want to throw out to be efficient.
I'm worried that it wouldn't be efficient, that we'd get cross purposes. So, if we just move to Objective C on Focus One, if there's any questions related to that.
I'm good until Two A.
Nice.
Just for the record.
My questions are the same in each one, so I'll just keep moving along. So, in the Focus Two, Objective A, Implement Instructional Practices That Elevate Student Thinking and Understanding.
I have a question.
Okay.
Beth, do you want to go first, because you said you have a question to...
Yeah, mine's very discreet. I just, during Reina's presentation, what is the pilot use of webinar-based learning?
Is it for students or other people?
And how is...
Low clarification needed.
It's on page eleven.
You know, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm right there with you, Beth, sort of.
Do you want me to jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, when we think about maximizing professional development time, one of the big steps that we took this year, and it was a couple of year process, right?
It's not for kids.
So, when we're stepping back, you look to the left, and we're talking about professional development experiences. So, the supporting evidence links back to what those activities and strategies are. So, when we think about our utilization of staff time on superintendent's conference days, which we would love many more of throughout the course of the year, we think of the targeted PD that happens throughout the course of the year. We talked about our PLRDs, Dr. Core, which are those early releases. And if you can see the schedules that we're engaged in and the work that's being coordinated across the district, it's not just school level, it's department level, it's K twelve work, and that's happening. So, the constant focus that we're having here, and it is through our own need, it's through feedback loops, Mr. Hannah, where we're trying to maximize time, right? And we're trying to find the opportunities to do the work in different ways. So, when we think about the piloted use of webinar-based learning, when we think, you know, the first two examples were the opening faculty, staff meeting. So, we had typically, in my first so many years, we had Mr. McCormick Get Up, who is our district DASA coordinator, who does a twenty-minute presentation on DASA requirements and our district protocols. Following our security breach, data breach that we had going back five years ago, we put in a required technology security training program, and something which was applauded by the state when we had a technology audit a couple of years back. So, rather than Jesse being up there and presenting for another twenty minutes, we literally took their PowerPoint materials, they staff with voiceover. Staff members then had to make a commitment within their own independent time, whether that was at home, on a night, or weekend, or during a prep period or lunch period, where they had to go in and watch these twenty-minute videos and then sign off that they did it. There's an opportunity where we're thinking there's better use of our time, and two, we're providing our faculty and staff members with a little bit more flexibility. I can tell you, there was a lot of lifting to make sure we got everybody done by the goal dates that we had for state compliance on the topics. The next step that we're looking at is sexual harassment training. So, those of you that are on the policy committee know that we looked at, and we have a first read of a policy on the agenda this evening, that's to reflect changes in the sexual harassment policies based upon new laws or revised laws in New York State. So, in doing so, we're actually going to subscribe to a webinar service, where all of our staff members will have to participate in a webinar that will actually have an assessment associated with it. And in doing so, we're not going to lose a PLRD day or a faculty meeting for this new high level of training. Folks are going to have to do it on their own time, it's going to be a module, it's twenty-some minutes. And it's a new direction, new opportunities, and again, we're trying to be flexible thinkers in our plan.
So, just, if we end up having a couple of small updates, we might want to add the word "staff" into there, just so that folks out in the committee don't presume that this is webinar, we're going to get rid of some teachers and use webinar instruction for kids.
Oh, good point. But let's say, though, I actually just did the sexual harassment training on webinar, it was really good.
Totally good.
It's next to maximize professional...
It's really good.
The state hasn't released their new standards.
It doesn't matter, I think it's just...
See if I can print it.
Yeah, we're subscribing to a service.
It should taste good.
It was really good, though, it took an hour.
And just similarly, in the timeline, is it school year or school day?
Yeah, you know, I got to tell you that I'm not quite sure. I happened, I thought I made the change last week. But, yeah, I already actually have that notation, I'll make the fix before we, you know, we post it.
And for those who don't know, SCD is Superintendent Conference Day.
Nice work, acronym man.
Acronym man, thank you.
I do, yeah.
What's an acronym for acronym man?
AM.
AM.
I do, I have, you have a question, Mark? Want to just go in order here?
My question's not in this section, my people are taking my questions, thank you for that.
Nice.
Oh, yeah.
I have two questions, I think you kind of answered one. I continue to push for just a more clarified definition of the word "successful" in when we think about measuring evidence. But then, of course, later in the presentation, you talked about that, and even getting to a BOE visit, so it was very exciting. So, that's less a question now, but I guess this is less a question and more a thought, connected to something you said, Reina, which was about taking this K through twelve PTLW sort of piece, moving away from it just being a program and becoming part of the living, breathing, integrated component with STEAM, and, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, et cetera. I guess, I would like to actually do this, I'm doing this strategically, I guess, publicly, but it would just be good, I think, for us as a board to think about, as we enter another budget season, to think about what the relationship and between Project Lead the Way as a program is, and how we're building science thinking, especially with the opportunity around the next, whatever you want to call them, next-generation learning science standards, or the New York State science standards, and start to think about how, what science actually looks like beyond just PTLW in the elementary school, K through five, in order to make that program up at the upper levels even stronger, and maybe even considering adding a cluster teacher for the elementary, a science cluster teacher for the elementary, something, just thinking out loud.
So, I guess I would just want to insert, if through maybe a question mode, which is, we've done that thinking, so it doesn't mean we can't build on it. But I guess, Dave, when I hear you say that, it sounds like we could be thinking about, I mean, from the time that we implemented Project, PLTW, Project Lead the Way, there's always been a plan for how to integrate Project Lead the Way into the sciences, and we selected it based on the science. I'm just saying...
No, I'm talking specifically about elementary school because of...
I am, too.
Two meetings ago, you, I could, I could love to rewind the video just to get the exact quote, because I don't want to misquote you, but you said it's basically, you know, we talked about science at the elementary school, and you were like, they don't have the time, and we got into that whole conversation. I mean, I'd like to look at it anyway, but I think it's important for us to...
I'm not looking to debate that, so at least let me, let me fill it in, because I think if I said it, and there was a misunderstanding, I would want to have the opportunity to clarify that. So, I can't imagine that I said that, because from the time that we've inter, that we've introduced Project Lead the Way at the elementary school, the whole premise was to integrate our STEM and our science curriculum. So, Project Lead the Way has, in essence, what you would call a cluster teacher, which is a New York City term, we don't, we call them special area teachers. But our PLTW teacher is a teacher who specializes in Project Lead the Way. And we purposely implemented Project Lead the Way because it meets some of the New York, the next-gen science standards. So, the expectation that students are getting some of that STEM-based curriculum through Project Lead the Way, and they're going to be getting some of that science curriculum through the classroom science teacher, and those are integrated. So, earlier, when I spoke about how our classroom teachers go with the students to Project Lead the Way, that it isn't an isolated experience. And the reason that we want to make sure that we're doing that is because Project Lead the Way is steeped in STEM, STEAM, including the mathematics and including the science. So, that's exactly where we're going, which is to have this integrated environment so that they're all working together and that we are working toward this common goal. So, I think that's what I'm hearing you describe.
Is what I'm hearing you say, then, is that the expectation for the board is, over time, I guess, over the next whatever amount of time, that there will be really rich science experiences for the elementary school students as low as kindergarten? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yeah, so, I guess, I'm a little surprised because, and I know there's some questions about how much the board knows or doesn't know about Amplify, but I've been talking about, all last year, we talked about rolling out a new science curriculum, because our science program currently, because New York State took five years to adopt the next-gen science standards and convert them into the New York State learning science standards, we were waiting for that. And with that, that's the professional development that we started last year at the six-twelve level, and the, the surveying of science programs, so that we can ensure that our science curriculum is aligned with the next-gen standards.
No, I didn't know that we had selected Amplify. I know you had mentioned it as one of several.
Right, but even if we're...
I'm just going to back up, can we get a couple of sentences on Amplify for those...
Sure, I guess Amplify, like, you know, like, when anything changes, we have to change our curriculum materials. So, for years, we've been buying Foskets, maybe you've heard that word over the years, Foskets. Maybe you've even seen those big black and white boxes in classrooms. So, at the elementary level, there are certain areas where you have to buy something that provides the materials for teachers. They're not going to write their science units from scratch, like you might expect at the secondary level, to a certain degree. So, Amplify is just another, it's just an updated next-gen science program that now takes the new science standards and aligns them.
I just didn't know that we purchased it, because I don't remember seeing the budget line.
So, I know that we went back and forth, so I am going to just say, I know that Dr. Harrison has indicated that I'm going to give you all the information on Amplify, but I guess just to stay focused on this...
No, then you answered my question. Then you answered my question. Like, that answers my question. Is that implementing, that answers my question.
Yeah, and I would say, again, we're talking, so, as Dr. Core indicated, that, so, we're in a position where we're going to clarify the communications, because there's different sets of experiences and takeaways that were had, and we respect that.
sets of experiences and takeaways that were had, and we respect that. So that's something Dr. Core's working on, and we'll get that for you in the near future.
That answers my question.
So the board is on the same page. But when we step back, we're also looking at, we're piloting specific units, and there was conversation back in the spring, and that, so that is the focus of the work. So the questions that are out there, we're hopeful that we'll be able to answer them, and you'll see how these exciting opportunities come away.
The answer to my question is implementing the Amplify curriculum at the elementary level will take that piece wide, so thank you.
Yeah, just on that note, I just wanted to commend, over the last number of years, the work that you've done related to informing the board and community, engaging the community about PLTW with the presentations at school board, videos that we could watch, that you've given to other districts about the work, and the demo experiences at the science fair with the students and the teachers. So I think it's a really great example of helping board and community understand the work that's going on in the schools, and I just wanted to share that as an example.
Certainly second.
Thank you.
So Focus Two, Objective B. Did you have one? Yeah, go, go, sorry.
So, no, thanks. And just overall, thank you for the presentation. I thought that Focus Number One was great, just as an overall comment before I jump into Two. That's new, the communication piece, at least the way it was presented, and I thought, you know, it was great, but there's no particular comments that I had. On Focus Two, this is something that we have been working with for a year now, and I'm still trying to understand it, and I think I'm pretty much there. And I went back, of course, and looked at what we, that we're given last year, and just looking at it this year. So my bottom-line questions I have are this, is, once the unit planners are uploaded, and you've put here a timeline of January 2019, out of curiosity, does that process, is there another piece to it that we should expect in 2020 that will fall within implementing instructional practices that elevate student thinking? Yes, what is that? Just so I can think.
So what I would hope is, I think there's two key components. I think one key component, when we rolled out Rubicon Atlas, was how do we provide our community with access to what's going on in a classroom? How do I know if I'm a parent? So when we post the Rubicon Atlas unit planners, if you go in, right now, what you currently see is an enduring understanding, an essential question, the knowledge and the skill. And I would say, but if you look at the unit planner, when I, when I show you the tool, there's also Stage Two, which is assessment. So state, we have no intention of ever putting up the assessments, because those are the teachers' assessments, those are the materials, those are the tests, right? So we're not going to put that up, but what I hope that we begin to see is how the link from those instructional practices lead to assessment, which can be represented in multiple ways, a performance assessment, data, collective. So I think the way that I would hope that you begin to see the unit planner play out is through student performance, through student work, through student assessment. So I don't, it's not in the unit planner that that lives, because you wouldn't see that, but you would see it through those other areas, those other ways of us providing evidence, which is through the data and student performance.
Right, which is Objective B. So really, for Objective A, I'm just curious, because each year, it appears, in the way that this is being presented, is that we're going to have objectives and goals, and I would think, in order to be able to do this effectively and meet those objectives, you're not going to have more than three or four goals per objective.
That's right.
So for Objective A, we did the EQs, those have all been posted and developed, and we're now doing the unit planners, that's all going to be done, you know, sometime around the beginning of next year. In terms of implementing instructional practice, not assessment, is there any other piece that's left to do?
So I think that the, and I, bless you, I might have shared this in the spring when we were talking, or maybe David and Allison did part of their middle school presentation. You know, for years, when Joyce was even at the middle school, the middle school spent a lot of time on, on like Bloom's Taxonomy, like how we learn and the levels of learning that happen, and they spent a lot of time talking about questioning, the power of questions. And they did a really, really nice job, but through the work of Sarah Russ, the instructional coach, she has rolled out this thing called the QFT, which is a questioning protocol. Questioning, it's like, it just flew out of my mind what QFT stands for.
Thank you for thinking.
Because something for thinking, I don't know, but anyway, so you might, you were going to say, what does QFT stand for? But what happened was, all of that deep knowledge that was, that was uncovered and discovered with Joyce, and then Allison and David, became, we call it concretized, through this QFT process, because it gave teachers a strategy to get kids questioning. So some of what you're asking, Deb, is the true instructional practice is, as a teacher, when I take everything that I know about teaching, and I now turn it over to kids so that I know that kids, I'm using my instructional practices to get kids to do the kind of thinking that we want them to do. And how do I know kids are doing that kind of thinking? Through assessment.
Okay, I, I understand that.
That's the link.
Okay, and I will say that for the, at the recent open house I attended at the high school, it was, and probably because we've been having this education for the last year, it was the first time I noticed the teachers, when they gave the presentation to the parents, many of them talked about unit planners. They used those words, and I, it was the first time now...
So exciting.
Whether that's different, because I now hear it and look for it, or if they really are making a change in how they communicate to parents, but I just wanted to acknowledge, I personally listened for it, and I heard it on more than one instance.
And I would like to add...
Did you?
The use of net yes, and the essential questions.
Yes.
And, and, I mean, in math, like, I was very, very impressed with, and again, not sure other parents who don't sit in these seats necessarily got what I got, but I was...
Yeah, but I heard those specifically, unit planners, and they went through it and showed it on the board.
That really is fabulous.
So I just wanted to also point that out.
Thank you, that is wonderful feedback. Would you call that feedback? I don't know what you'd call it.
There you go.
Definitely a loop of some...
No, well, that's, that was my question. You understood it. Open house, is that's engagement or feedback? Because that was, that was...
It was open, it was engagement, now it's...
Yeah, there we go.
And my only other comment on this particular objective is, I'm not sure how I feel about the fact that maximized professional development experience falls underneath Objective A, implement instructional practices. I know that it does, but when we only get two or three objectives per, two or three objectives per focus, I feel like that will be a recurring one, and it's always going to be on there. So I just point out that as a board member, I'm always going to expect that, and I, I'm not sure that's, that should be, that should be taken up with that box, because...
But the keyword is maximize it.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm just going to throw that out there, but I'm not going to argue that it's not appropriate, I just wanted to...
Can I throw out maybe something that might work in terms of thinking through that lens? Because I, I know what you're saying, but I wonder if it's almost as if we want you to expect to see that there, and it would be the next column that I would, that you might expect to see change over time. Because nothing exists in schools if we're not in this ongoing learning as educators.
I agree, but if I could have a fourth box, then I would definitely want to see it. But I'm just afraid that we're not going to put a third objective in there, when really we're always going to have professional development. I mean, we've already committed to it as a district. So I don't, anyway, I know you got a lot of time. That's just my one thought. And the last comment I'll make is...
But is there something that you feel you expected to see there that you're not seeing?
Yes, and you're not going to like this.
Go ahead.
Last year, we had development of new master schedule at the high school, and I'm curious why it's not there, because to me, that's an objective. To me, that's a measure, like, when you started before earlier, you had said, Dr. Harrison, what's the difference between just the work we do and our objective? For me, in my seat, it's something that we measure as an objective. The work you do, we don't measure in different ways, we don't see a clear deadline, we don't put a timeline. But last year, you gave us development of new master schedule, and it's not on here this year. Instead, I see maximized professional...
Yeah, so I totally hear you, so I would say two things. One, and this is one of the areas where we had conversation about a goal versus the work, and the goal is maybe the launch process, but when we think about next steps, and when we were talking about, to go back to your first comment or question in this objective related to the next steps and the evolution of the work, you're going to see that come to life when we share building reports. There's going to be examples of work, and our struggle is always that, when we look at our internal action plans that our administrators are developing that look similar to this format, it's a lot of technical writing. So it's that idea of like, how do we kind of bring it back with lay speak? But in doing so, there's going to be things that grow out of it, that are, that are activities, that are objectives in particular buildings, some that may not necessarily fall on these kinds of charts, because it's an unspoken, this is what's happening, this is what's getting, what's getting done. But some of those things will come forward when we see the follow-up report that will have building department.
But you know, one of the things that we could, because I think that's like interesting food for thought, you know, I think that philosophically, I believe there isn't a decision that a building administrator makes every day that ultimately doesn't link back to, to, to kids and teaching and learning, no matter what we do, and it seems, it's the simplest thing, it's when we schedule a fire drill, it's when we, every single thing we do is, makes a difference. So in a way, I wonder if there could be, if there could have been a box there that talked about the, how the infrastructure supports this goal, because I would say, and I don't want to isolate it to just master schedule, I know it's a big deal right now, and I, and I know it's on the forefront of a lot of people's minds, but I would tell you that the conversations that we're having around world language and how you fit it in the day, I mean, I think infrastructure and schedule, it's something we deal with every single year, it's a challenge. I think that the scheduling of Project Lead the Way for K through two has presented lots of challenges and continues to, so I don't know, like, I think that there's something there. I like, obviously, I agree with Chris, that I don't think it should be its own thing here, this is a district level, but infrastructure and how our buildings and our schedules support this goal, I think, is very real.
I like that.
Yeah, there's lots of layers to that, and I found that, and obviously, there's another entry point for number, strategic objective six, when we think about finance and operations and the capital bond, and how it links into that, and looking at moving on these spaces, right? So I think it's a great point.
So the higher level is schedules and how we use time in our buildings, is what you're saying?
I'm just saying, I think that as, as a building administrator, your infrastructure and how your building works is so, is so deeply linked to this goal.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. Were we at Focus Two, Objective B?
I could talk.
If you want to, you want to roll with it? No, I did want to follow up with what you're saying, though, which is, when you're talking about the next steps, Dr. Core, you talked about the assessment piece, but, I mean, I guess the thing that I keep in my mind's eye, and hopefully it's an accurate idea to have, is that, you know, we're moving from a more static, you know, we were just looking at policy of these, you know, five-year schedules and textbook selection, and the idea that this is an ongoing, continuous, living, shifting work with the curriculum, with assessment. Right now, we're still in the relatively early stages of it, but that the work would never end, that the engagement with it would never end, that the conversations we're hearing at open houses would continue to reference that going forward.
I think that the piece, maybe that would be, would be a nuance. So if, for, you're a parent who actually recognizes that the conversation around essential questions was happening, I guess for me, the next question is, well, are we assessing for that? Like, if this is the big idea, so we've been assessing kids forever, like, it's not like all, it's not like we've never assessed. I think what we're working toward is the alignment. So if we're asking an essential question and we're teaching to a big idea, well, how do we know? So it's not enough just to generate that question, it's, it's developing your transfer goals, because biggest, essential questions are about transferring, about transferring your knowledge to other situations, novel situations, new experiences. So I think that's the nuance of assessment. I don't want to make it sound like we haven't been working on assessment, we're always working on assessment. It's creating the balanced assessment is our goal, that's the key here, it's the balanced assessment system and the alignment, so that the unit planners are aligned. If we're saying, this is the knowledge, these are the skills, and this is the thinking, where in Stage Two are we planning to assess for those? That's the key work.
I can tell you this, if I can jump in, the key word I get hung up on, and I've really thought about this a lot, because this to me is the hardest piece to understand, is that you, you, the district uses intentionally balanced assessment system. And last year, for the first time, I was able to understand that the different types of assessments that are out there, right? You told us a lot about pre-assessments, formative assessments, summative assessments, performance assessments, we talked about exit tickets. Is that a system? Is that, you know, like, so, because that word is, is something that I wrestle with, and if it is a system, can we see it all on one piece of paper? This is the Irvington District system, and, and does every, does every class use that system? Or I know performance assessments, you made it very clear, that's more language-oriented, but I, I sit there and listen for it, and that, that's what I'm still not grasping.
It's not a district, it's not a district system. So developing our unit planners using Rubicon Atlas as our framework for developing, that's a system. When we talk about developing a balanced assessment system, our system is, if we want to look at it from the district level, it's, here are the key components, but at every grade level and at every course, it's going to play out differently.
Why?
Because it depends on the grade level, it depends on, on the course, what, what your system is going to look like.
It's not up to the teacher, is my concern, because I...
It is and it isn't. In other words, what we would say is, we would expect every, eventually, and, and really, in this case, it happens, especially like at the elementary level, every classroom teacher uses formative assessment on a regular basis. Every teacher uses, at the secondary level, every teacher uses summative assessment. Like, those are the guarantees, right? But we're saying, it's not enough at the secondary level to only use summative, and we're saying at the elementary, it's not enough to only use formative. So how do we ensure, as a teacher, as a grade level, as the designer of that course, that when I'm creating my unit planner, I am assessing kids in different ways? And that, we say, for two reasons. Number one, we want to make sure we're embedding more pre-assessment, because we want to spend our time teaching what kids really need to know, not maybe what they already know. So we want to, we want to be wise about how we're doing that. But we also know that not all kids learn the same way, and not all kids demonstrate their knowledge, understanding, and thinking the same way. So that balanced system says, it's not okay to only assess Raina in this one way for what you want her to know. You need to be thinking more broadly about that. You need to be thinking about having, at the, if I'm in kindergarten, you know, our kindergarten teachers rely a lot on the one-to-one, but there are other ways to assess kindergartners besides sitting and listening to one child. So when we say balanced, it is different at the different levels, but what we're saying is, it's not okay to have one way. And here's the variety of types of assessments we can have, let's decide which ones we're going to use. And in certain grade levels, we're told which ones, right? So we know in grades three through eight, we're going to have the New York State, that's one form of assessment, right? That's one way that we're collecting data. We've infused the apple, we've infused Ames Web, we're using Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment. So that's what we need. So I would say, is each teacher developing it? Well, no, because we've made a commitment to a consistent cohesive approach to, to curriculum. So I wouldn't say one teacher is, but I would say a grade level is, and it may be different in second grade than it is in third. And let me just give you one example of what I mean by that. So in second grade, and I just, I started earlier tonight by saying this, we're now looking at our Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment, our Ames Web data, our, our Foundations data, and, and we're looking at how Ames Web translates that into Lexiles. Well, second grade, K one and two are the only ones that have Foundations. So it is specific to the grade level based on what they have available to them, what we use, and what we're trying to correlate.
There you go.
Can I just follow up?
Can you give a secondary level example like that?
Sure.
What it looks like?
Right, so I'll use world language, because that's where we have write that cohesive, right? So we're using the apple assessment, the teachers have been developing their formative assessments, and they're developing their summative assessments. And as you know, they're designing the curriculum, so when you go in now to the unit planner, it's called world language, and it's, it's world language, and the French and Spanish teacher, world language two, if you're in year two, we're using the same curriculum, it's being taught in French, and it's being taught in Spanish. So the expectation is that everybody has formative assessment, everybody has summative assessment, everybody is using apple assessment data to inform their thinking.
I think it's all very helpful, and it takes me, my last comment is, it takes me back to where you started, which is the communication piece. I think if we're committed to this, and if communication now is what is an objective, it's going to be an ongoing objective every year, because I don't know if I heard that last year, communicating the strategic plan, making sure everybody understands it. Assessment is such a huge component of this. I only share that if I'm, if we're struggling with it, it's going to take, obviously, a long time, or a lot of work, rather, to, to make sure that the community understands it, because, um, when we use words like a balanced assessment system, I think we're going to need to flush that out.
Yeah. I just want to follow up. You know, we had our first curriculum committee meeting the other day, and we were reviewing our, our, you know, renewing our goal for that committee. And there was a word in there that we really focused in on, which was community, and using the curriculum committee as an opportunity to, to, to look into exactly what you're saying, which is, you know, how, how is it being communicated to the community?
And my last, I'm sorry, my last thing, I keep coming back to Raina, is, we also use the word model. We talk about a system, and we talk about a program assessment model. That also, just every time, I get hung up on it. So, I'm just going to, and I don't want to keep going, because I know that's taking up too much of my time, but if, if we're trying to communicate it, those are the words I, I focused on.
I'm going to send that talking out.
I have to think about that.
Yeah, so am I. Well, I mean, but it, I think you use it because it came directly from a, a model, so whether you're, you're doing something different.
No, we kind of reconfigured it. It's its own model now.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not belittling your point.
It's like a structure.
Structure.
Framework.
Framework.
Um, I could change it, the word. If that word doesn't feel.
It's a good point.
Framework, structure.
We use certain words very deliberately.
Chart.
Process.
Process.
Words.
Just don't change it again when you change it.
All right. So, now we know that, see if David still remembers his question from two minutes ago.
It wasn't a question. I was just going to tack on and say, you know, I know my experience with Atlas is that you can show, you know, when you're looking at a course, per se, you can see that there's assessments laced through the course in Atlas. So, like, in terms of it being visible as a, as a system of assessment in that particular course, from a parent perspective, I don't know if we, if we, I don't know if we layer at the, at the upper levels that assessment in there, but certainly not.
Yeah. So, in the, in the Identify Target Date for Alignment of Assessment, you're, you're working through, the, the staff is working, the faculty is working this part, 2018, through the end of the year, in completing the, the, the unit planners in Rubicon Atlas. And I presume then we start to take more return in terms of that work on the assessment piece, and that's why you need the time to assess. I mean, there, there will be work going on with assessment at some point this year. It's not just.
Oh, no, they're doing it now.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing it as they go, right. So, I think, and you know, that's what I said earlier, Michael, that, you know, in some cases, for our people, our teachers who've been doing this now for a couple of years, and their unit planners are in pretty good shape, they're, they're, they're doing that work. For teachers who either have had multiple courses, or have been a little bit slower to sort of come on board with us, they're still working through Stage One to a certain degree, and they're maybe not in Stage Two.
Stage One is the unit planner.
Stage One, Stage One is, is, is the goals. It's what we want to accomplish. It's the knowledge, it's the standards, the EUs and the EQs, the knowledge, the skill, and the thinking. In Stage Two, you assess everything that's in Stage One, in some way, shape, or form, not on like one test. But, so, Stage One is what, is, it's called desired results. It's what do we, what are our goals? What do we want to, kids to know and be able to do? Stage Two, how do we know they can do it? Stage Three is really the teacher part, which is the activities, what activities am I going to plan to get the kids there?
Okay. And, you know, sorry if I created any fear with the idea of who owns it, but, you know, maybe it's where do, do these items sit when we look at them? Like, you mentioned with the capstone project, that you have a think tank of teachers. Well, that gives me an idea of where that fits in terms of its development. And, and I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is an understanding of where the work is.
I guess, who's doing the work?
Who's doing, who's doing the work?
Not necessarily, you know, Dr. Harrison and Carol Stein sit on this. So, the building plans.
Yeah.
That's where you would see it.
That's where we'll see it, yeah.
You would see in the building plan, you'd see some level of, because, you know, what you're not seeing here is, oh, what does this actually look like? Which is, I feel like what you want to know, well, that's the building plans. The building plans sit under the district plan.
Are we ready to move to the next part, which is the use of data to inform instruction and planning?
I don't know. It's a very good question.
We have to.
Objective C. Well, I'll just say a simple one while you reflect on it, which is, it's exciting to, to, you know, look ahead to these targeted Board of Education School visits. That's one concern I've always had on the board, is that, you know, we're doing this balcony view discussions, but, you know, to have these opportunities to get connected, to, to see the work that's occurring is an exciting opportunity.
Yes.
Looking forward to it.
I agree.
It's funny, you know, for that one in particular for me, while I, you know, I definitely would look forward to it, maybe, I feel like I've been here for so long that I, you know, I don't, I, I need to go back, obviously not forward. It, it gives me pause, because I'm not sure if this is falling under the use of data to inform instruction and planning, how that's going to happen. I mean, I, I can see that for our own edification, it's going to be helpful, like these conversations are and the roundtables are, but how does that particular activity?
Back to your last statement about the ecosystem of.
Yeah, because I'm just not sure how that activity is going to support the use of data to inform instruction and planning. I, I get that it's going to be helpful, but it's under a particular objective and heading, so that just gives me pause to think about, are you going to ask us to fill out a form and give you some feedback, so you have some data? No, I'm serious, but if you're.
Feedback loops again.
We can ask you to assess the kids.
No, but it's a philosophical question, because I think you, you have a different perspective on.
Yeah, I'm just curious how we're, how our observation.
I feel strongly that it does. I feel strongly that it does. That, that I think that.
They bring it to us. Instead of them bringing it to us, we're actually going to go to it and see the actions.
It's observational data.
It's observational data.
You're able, observational data. So, when we think about our administrators, I mean, they share things that are evidence for them, they're presenting examples of work product, they're talking about processes that's happening in classroom, the examples of implementation of curriculum, the level with student thinking, it's hard for you to see that unless you engage, and you go in and it happens to be a Socratic seminar taking place in a particular class, to be able to witness things. It's anecdotes that you're going to be able to take from those observations that my personal hope is, is that it starts, again, we talk about the linkage and alignment. You'll see those a-hahs, just like you had an open house at the high school, both you and Maria shared.
Okay. And then my last comment on Objective C is, it's great to see that you put here examples of deeper analysis to be integrated into the student performance report, and there's, they're attached to it. When I look at the calendar and look at the work sessions, I was just noting that on May fourteenth, it says K five to highlight stu, I assume SB is student performance. Is that right?
Strategic plan.
Oh, strategic plan, okay. So, strategic plan-related initiatives.
Another one.
It's, it's, it's specific to K through five. Is there a reason why we're not doing six through twelve?
It's the next.
Look over at June four on the left bottom.
That's one.
They had to squeeze it in on the left side.
Yeah, so many days in the month.
It's the one case where it's not on the right side.
Gotcha. Okay. So, I thought that was, so that's strategic plan, not student performance. Okay, I thought you were limited.
Yep. And I just want to, I just want to throw out one note, that, that idea of it being so late in the year, not, you know, you think workflow and everything, but state ed, one of the things that they articulated really profoundly was that idea of shortening the number of days of tests, the number of testing items, that would not only make for a less stressful period for kids, when we haven't seen that, because with the open-ended testing times, there's kids that we're fighting with, that are testing all day long. But then, the timeframes for the return of data is, is just crazy. Like, we used to get it in August, which was the problem. We're realistically getting it in October now. And then, region's data doesn't come out until after the new year. So, we're, there's, there's a curve that they're well behind, and they're, they are doing some really good work and good thinking, and, you know, looking to revise APPR on a state level, but like, this is one area where it's, it, Dave, you talked about the importance of it. It really hinders you when, when you can't get the data until October.
Hence stressing the, the balanced assessment system, the importance of that.
I just had one other question about C on the district-wide discipline report.
Just grab the mic. For some reason, your voice isn't projecting.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
So, I had another question about the dis, well, it's a new question about the district-wide discipline report.
Yeah.
So, when you presented on that, you talked about sort of moving forward. I wanted to know if you, because you talked about your observations of the data since you came on board, and changes in the poverty rate and, and other issues that have come up. Are you planning to go backwards in time and, and include that, or is this a forward-thinking project?
Currently, we got to get a handle on what we're doing today.
Okay.
So, I, I think we're looking at that, and to provide meaning, we want to look at the kids that are there. If we recognize patterns related to particular kids, it may be areas where you drill down.
Ah, okay.
But, you know, this is some, this is something that's, that's new for us, but it's that idea to start to look at our practices through a different lens, and to, to be able to look for patterns and trends that may emerge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I guess we would move, we're, I've lost track. I don't know. Maybe just here.
We're at the end.
Is three now?
We're nearing the end, Michael. How's that?
This. Financial and operational leadership. Hey, this is short. It's not even ten o'clock yet. Or it's ten, four thirty-five.
Would you say it's four thirty-five?
You know what? I have, I have.
That's pretty funny.
Anyhow, we're on the last page, I believe.
And, Michael, not as much as I want to move forward, I do want to circle back to a, a particular point that, that, that was made, and I want to make sure that my, my words are heard clearly, and I don't want to ever leave space for some inference in that. So, and, and then hearing it and thinking about how Beth framed her related question to the discipline report, that this, you know, there's a piece that we talk about shifts in culture, and we see, and, and shifts in our community. This isn't about race. This isn't about poverty. It's about identifying trends in student conduct and our actions related to it. So, there's pieces to it that we can say certainly do relate, that are important takeaways. We want to see if there's a disproportionality in students with, with special needs or something else that may receive consequences. But I want to be really, really clear in my response, that this is not a conversation necessarily about race. This is not a conversation about special needs. This isn't a conversation about socioeconomics. It's a broad look into this. And when we, when I had, gave my introductory remarks, it's talking about understanding our community, and looking, there's been shifts here, but we got to see where we respond and, and how we manage particular situations. So, I think it's just really important for me to clarify that that isn't there. There may be some findings that are associated to any demographic group, grade level, school level practices, but this is just for us to start to have an understanding of what are the patterns that exist in our practice. And hearing those words, and my own, my, knowing what my own thinking is, I, I just felt it important to make sure we step back and clarify.
It's a tricky one. I, I, I mean, another way of saying it is, I think it's the district taking responsibility for how it provides services to students, and this is one component of it. Are we, are we aware of, of the, in this case, you know, the, how discipline is handled, and is it done in a way that's equitable?
This is about every kid.
It's about every kid.
But it's, you know, but you also look at subgroups, you look at every kid, and that falls into the category of those who may get themselves in a.
On a policy note, isn't it also required, every district in New York State has to have some kind of repository for their discipline data?
Yeah, and we have, we have a.
But, but what I hear you saying is, you're trying to improve it so that we can actually.
Oh, but it's for a different purpose. It's East School. Yeah, so everything sits in East School. So, discipline records travel with kids, is the point.
And even the attendance records might become part of the data that you use to look for it, because that's become a huge focus.
Which is actually shared by Joyce in her presentation last spring, which is that she had done a, a project looking at attendance and realized that it shifted the.
Disciplinary.
Well, it shifted the performance, or the, the experience for students who were having attendance issues by focusing on it, and improved it for them. So, that was, that was a very interesting use of data by our administrator in that case. So, finances, financial planning, long-range planning. We're excited.
I'll start with this one. I really love the format of this, the look of this presentation, it being more global and not, like, comparing it to last year. It had also some school and department goals, and it just kind of, it's too much at once, it muddies the water, and you're, you're going back and forth.
We're still, like, going for three hours, though.
I know, I know.
Well, no, no, no. No, no. There's a part that nobody sees, which is that we had an executive session that filled in the clock.
We're still here, ten thirty.
You look at the clock?
So, I love this.
I know, but there's an executive session. Sorry. Go ahead.
My comments are about, I'm sorry. Well, first of all, I, I, you said something, Dr. Harrison, that I think needs to be repeated, is that it is impossible for you and us to communicate with the, with the community on everything that is going on in these schools. And you referenced the use of reports that you're going to be providing the board on, regarding some, you know, different things, and, you know, they would be made available as well. And I feel like that's really important, because some people, when did you discuss this, and when was this? Not everything, we don't have enough time. This is your job, so we just volunteer, and we come to meetings, you know, twice a month, and it's just, it's, it's impossible. So, my question is more about the, the school and department goals. I know that's going to be a report. Is there a target on, on that for the board to receive?
I, I don't have a concrete date. Next couple of weeks, though.
I'm assuming that the administrative meeting with Insight is also going to have an effect, you know, the survey results will impact this somewhat?
That's going to happen after that. I think, now, what you're going to see from our schools are goals that are aligned to our overarching objectives here, primarily the top two instructional goals. And so, that's where you're going to see that work. You know, as I indicated in a communication today, asking for expectations and outcomes around that. I'm, I'm no position to be able to speak to it yet, because we are, Raina and I have a call with them next week, where we're planning the workshop and getting to the details. And then, we got to have, it's an authentic experience.
No, I know. I'm, I'm. I was just saying, I would assume that that might influence some of those, those goals, that document, so I would think, no, you know? Because some of it did affect.
Yeah, but I just, we, you know, I think, just to acknowledge, to be practical. So, they have been working on their goals since August. Where, if they're ready, if, once, you know, once Chris is ready to give them to you, that is like a work in progress. We're first doing the workshop with them in a couple of weeks. So, that will be, that, that ship has sailed, so it doesn't mean there won't be work behind it, but it's not realistic to expect them to now go back. I mean, because the other thing I would share with you is, our building administrators take those goals documents, and they've already started to plan for how they're rolling out, sharing it with staff. Like, the year started, so we want them to look at that work, but it wouldn't be appropriate for it to show up in a document in now, or in October after the training.
But it's, it's not to undermine that there will be value to the work that we do.
Right.
Okay. And regarding this one, Focus Three, Objective A, the development of long-range financial plan, this was also one of the goals from last year. And we know there were a lot of things going on last year. I am just so, I just want to say, knowing what is on your plate this year and what is going on, I'm happy to see that it's there, but I also think, if all is equal, there are a lot of other things that are more pressing, that, you know, if, I, I just have a little concern that it's there again.
concern that it's there again.
To some, to some degree, I'm doing it all the time anyway, but I'm just trying to formalize it now. So I think that, I appreciate that and I will let you know if it becomes a problem with everything else that we have to do, but I think it's still something I really do want to get done. And again, a long range fluid document. So it's not like you just put a number on a thing and that's the document. It's a fluid thing, so it's going to always be living and breathing and so it's, and it's something I do anyway with analysis.
I've said, I think twice tonight about goals of ambition, right? So there's things on here, you know, we'd be rock stars if we turned around and said, every year you set a list of goals and you achieved every one a hundred percent. And we recognize you have different levels of success and some of them is the rigors and the challenges of the work and other environmental things that happen that slow you down. That's an example of it. Other pieces are when you're doing instructional work and, you know, it takes longer to get from point A to point B because there's more learning involved or the actual work takes more time than you originally anticipated. So all these things are things that we're committed to. Some are things that are going to be, you know, good for us, we did it, look at the results of it and other things are going to be, we made it to this point and this is where we kind of go next. So when you think of, you know, the goal related to unit planners, we've talked about that for a few years, right? And now we're getting to that point. January 1st, Deb's comments before, January 1st is a target date. There's going to be some flexibility in around that because there's different people that are in different places and people that have inherited, new staff have inherited different situations. So and then when we look at the related balanced assessment, there's an objective to develop timelines and goals there. And so those are our objectives, those will be our goals and that'll be informed by the work that's happening in our schools, but that may be an adjustment that is made along the way or maybe something, whatever the dates are that Raina believes are achievable, maybe we hit it, but there's pieces that, that there's different levels of success that we'll realize or attainment.
Any other questions related to this area? Close in? Well, clearly you gave a presentation, Carol, about where we are with the capital bond and that's going to hard and heavy into the fall, both with meetings, possibly even additional meetings for us here as well as forums with the community. So that's, that's something to keep in mind. And I would just say that, you know, I think the board and I'll even speak for the administration that we are keen to work with CSCA and administrators to settle those contracts and so that is definitely a priority. I think great of forums. So, Ray, thank you. I appreciate the audience members who, the community members who've been able to stay with us and participate. And now is your chance to participate if you have any questions or comments. You'd like to go to the microphone, share your name and try and keep your comments or questions to about three minutes, but we never know how long our responses will be.
It definitely won't be that long. Can you hear me? I'm Erin Bernstein, I'm now the parent of a third grader. So there's a change. One question on two C. I noticed we referenced enhancing the role, I believe it was of the data manager and I vaguely recall that we had budgeted for a data manager, I think it was two years ago. We didn't hire the data manager. I think it was still rolled into this year's budget. Did we hire a data manager?
Yeah, so long, I, we have limitations in what we can discuss related to personnel, but we have an expanded data role that exists today and the budgeted funds are being allocated to support that opportunity.
So is there a dedicated person in that role?
We have a dedicated data manager, but the person also holds other responsibilities associated with data, not just looking at new initiative. There's significant day-to-day data responsibilities in a school district, tremendous reporting that has to go to Albany that goes to DC, let alone our own management of grading and everything that happens internally. So when you look at the existing position, it has been amplified.
No pun intended.
It has, it has been expanded to increase the other role and in doing so, it required monies to get there. So the funds are being utilized.
Did we use all the budget money then for that or did we allocate something to something else? Allocate some of those funds?
Erin, I'm not going to answer questions about every dollar and cent. We've used the money for that, right? So I just said, I answered your question and I don't know how else you want me to answer it.
Okay. About the long range plan, I think, and while I know it's a Herculean effort to get it done, I think that having that document when you present about the bond next year and just showing the neutrality to the budget, I think will be important for the community. So as much as I know it's probably a hard effort to formalize it, I do think it's important for everyone to see because I know we keep hearing it's budget neutral, but I think to see it in a five-year plan, I think will be helpful to getting, you know, what we want in terms of the bond passing. And then, Raina, because I can't let you off the hook about world language. And you gave a little.
I was surprised, I was surprised I've made it this long.
Just to your last point though, I mean, it, we don't say budget neutral, we say tax neutral with the idea.
Tax neutral, I'm so sorry.
That we have debt service that's retiring and that this would not increase, this would replace that retiring debt service with new debt.
Yes, it would be helpful, I think, to see that over five years, but Raina, you're not getting off the hook.
I'm waiting.
So you did mention, you gave a little teaser about evaluating whether or not world language could fit into the curriculum for K through five. I know you have a committee, I won't ask who's on the committee. I guess what progress, can you share any of the progress that has been made? I mean, I get asked all the time and I've heard soundbites that sound good, but I'd love to hear it from you.
Sure. So I guess I would just say, in the spirit of promoting language, I think you know, Dazleen has added a club, Spanish club and a French club this year. So we're excited about that. We have teachers, two teachers who wanted to, so you know, clubs are mostly supported by teachers at, in the buildings and we are also running the after-school program. So I was excited to see that we were able to expand to the club at Dazleen. Yeah, the committee has several dates identified and our goal is to present, I can't remember when we agreed that we thought.
It's, it's part of.
Part of the curriculum.
Curriculum and PD plan, December 18th.
Okay, I was going to ask, it is December 18th, okay.
Yeah, and so.
Well, we said December 18th, right?
And I would say, you know, it is a moment where I can share my appreciation because we really have used the resources that you have shared. We've been in touch with many of our neighboring districts who have programs and will be visiting some places. So we really are like full speed ahead on this and I think then it's to be able to come forward and say, so here are the options, here's what it could look like, can we really recommend this, can the board support it? I mean, I would, I'd be lying to you if I didn't say there still are a ton of outstanding questions around it, but yes, we continue to work and pursue this.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Are there other parts to our agenda?
We have a consent agenda.
Do you have a consent agenda?
We have two policy first readings. If you want, I can speak to them.
Sure.
So we have item 7.1, which is a notice of Board of Education meetings, just some requirements that come out of some revised regulations in about the announcement and communication of meetings, locations and folks that are participating from afar. And then sexual harassment, I referenced before with respect to the webinar-based training. There's changes in regulations. We've reviewed both of these at the policy committee level and they're put forth for your consideration. I do need to say that it is essential that policy 110, sexual harassment must by law be adopted by the ninth, so at our next meeting. One of the real challenges here is that we still haven't gotten the state regulations related to it. So we may circle back down the road with modifications once again. So it kind of follows that timeline of what happens with that state ed with respect to testing. They set deadlines and timeframes first, but they don't give us the answers. Policy committee had a couple of particular questions that I've been in communication with our attorneys over, they're reviewing that and when I receive feedback, I'll advise the committee and if there's any necessary changes there, we'll adapt it accordingly before the ninth and advise you.
So we'll have a chance if you have any questions related to designs, but can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Now go with Brian on that one. It's number two. Does anyone have any questions related to any of the items? Okay, all in favor? Very good. We start the meeting by thanking the PTSA, so thank you again. And the, I guess that'll be on the upcoming agenda in terms of accepting.
Yes. Once we get the check, Susan, right? Yeah, no, but they've made their commitment and once we receive all the paperwork, we will be at it.
Technically, we have more community comment, but we're good? Okay, so we do have, well, we have our next meeting, which is, let me turn the page here,